Services department, building fees, all of the permits and inspections and whatnot. It's been quite a while since we have done a significant revision of this. We did make some minor amendments to it back in 2006, which is still eight years ago. So, we just felt like it was time to take a look at this again. I know that the staff, community development has spent a good bit of time on this. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them go over this and explain what they've found.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject a little bit before that too? Some of the other topics that came up in discussion, not necessarily fees, but how we can benefit provide services. And some of those things are if there's a reinspection fee, allowing them to use a credit card or something like that, so that they wouldn't have to drive all the way up here to do a reinspection fee. So, you know, if you want to approach those topics as well. In a bottom line is how do we provide best service to the customers?
Yeah, I certainly think that's fair. As long as we're taking these fees around, that will be the service delivery aspect of it too, certainly ought to do that. So, Brian Tracy, yeah.
Really, I think the dentists, this is more of a, in the building department, was really crazy how much money that they were losing when they were zoning. And that kind of just dragged the rest of the department in by default. And I've never seen Mike work this way.
Y'all don't know me, but I'm Mike's brother. I'll put my hat back on.
We know you're ever at the table. Just for those members of the audience who may or may not be involved in this or aware, but there are, you know, we certainly have to look at something that is more, that is in line with what others are charging, that makes sense, as long as it can be justified. I think they've looked at a number of counties that are close to us in size. We also need to take a look at, and it's not part of their study, but certainly our surrounding counties, because those are the folks where the same builders, same developers and whatnot. So, I think we're gonna see a little bit more of that too, from our neighborhood. Just what I have seen, and I've spent several hours looking over this, they've put a lot of time into it, I appreciate it. I'll let you go ahead and add.
Okay, and I think y'all got a copy of what I had given to Greg. And basically, the way I looked at it, it was just looking at the time it took the staff to prepare the rezoning application, the special use applications and the variance fees, and realized that our department was losing a substantial amount of money just processing an application. I also knew that we hadn't raised our fees since I was up here in 1991. I believe these were the same fees that we charged for rezoning and variance and special use fees, which was fifty dollars for rezoning, thirty for special use and thirty for variance. So, I did like a cost analysis on what it cost to process the application, on the rezoning application, and now I've got a special use permit because that process is very similar to rezoning now with the mail out letters. Right now, and this was a very conservative estimate of how much time. This would be a very low controversy, not too many questions, not too many headaches, not too many research having to be done. We're losing about six hundred dollars every time we process a rezoning application. It's a little bit less when you go to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. We're losing about three hundred and twenty-four dollars every time we have a variance to the zoning ordinance or an appeal to a decision. If you look at one thing, the planning commission reimbursement, we paid the planning commission members three hundred and fifty dollars for every meeting, not individually, but as a group, to come to the meetings. So, I did compare to other counties our size. I did have Truth County, they did not respond. This year, when I called them about the year 2004, they were charging three hundred and fifty dollars. Nancy called me after I had already submitted this, but I'll call Nancy again. She's a Truth County planner up in Truth County. But I compared it to Coney, Jasper, Lee County, Georgia, which is very similar to Harris County, and that they are a suburb to Albany. We have a lot of similarities with Lee County, Georgia, Madison County, Concord County, and those about the populations listed. As I said, it came just realizing how much it was costing to do the applications, looking at the fact that we had not looked at our fees since at least 1991, '94, and seeing what the surrounding counties were doing. So, I had made a recommendation to raise it, and then I think we put it at two hundred and fifty dollars for rezoning and for special use, and one fifty for the variance. Is that a question?
Before we get started, I have about four different schedules here of permit fees. Can we say which one is the memo?
Hers is the memo.
I bet that hers is the memo. I understand, I'm not talking about what Tracy's coming out, I'm talking about what I have.
Her appears on the agenda.
I got that. But I have about four of these. I need to know which one is the correct one before we start.
The one that just rescheduled the fees, that's just the fees they lose, the basic ones. The one that rescheduled permit fees revised is the one with the permittance. The one that says revise on yellow. All right, and I had a doubt, if you could just...
I have a question too. When you said we're losing money on several types of fees, how does that happen?
I went through and really analyzed staff time on how it did the application. We do pay for legal ads, which that's anywhere between ten and twenty dollars. We pay the planning commission for their travel. It's mainly staff time, a lot of it is the paper and printing costs. I do spend a lot of money on paper and printing. I think y'all see some of the packets that I mail out. I'm doing about fifteen packets for every rezoning that comes in. I also drive out to the sites, so I've got my travel and my staffing reports. So, it's a lot of staff time, money, printing and postage.
Okay, I have a question if you're free. What does my tax money pay for me?
Well, your tax money pays for me to do this, but you're also, the people coming in to rezone, they're used to rezoning, and a lot of communities do this, they base it on the use they're rezoning it to. If you're gonna come in and you're gonna rezone your property to a residential development from an agricultural development, you're gonna make money on that subdivision. So, in a way, the taxpayers are subsidizing a developer coming in and making money on the rezoning.
But we also make money off that development.
Yes, ma'am.
We make tax money off that development.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I guess what I have a problem with, are we asking the clients that we have in community development to foot the cost?
Well, let me interject there. And it depends on how you look at it. Community development, a lot of services they can provide can be looked at as an enterprise fund, because they're only providing services to specific users as opposed to taxpayers in general. So, a lot of places will require a building department to be self-sufficient like we do solid waste. It just depends on the philosophy that this mission wants to have. And on the play, man?
I think you correctly got it wrong. I think the two sides to it, and I think you're saying, first side is it makes a hole for everything that's done, but the other side to it is there are lower taxes that come in as a result of some of these, that then over time begin to offset the cost of that department. And what the numbers that y'all have provided are simply based, they don't look at the long term, it's simply just the cost, full cost of getting this done.
Yes, ma'am.
And should we cover that?
I don't think they are opposing the full cost in either case, and this...
No, we're not.
Yeah, okay, but some of...
Yeah, and one other aspect of it, I don't wanna sound, I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but sometimes we get zonings that really shouldn't be submitted, but because they're so cheap, they're gonna go, let's go through the processes. Probably a bad idea, but let's do it anyway. It's only fifty bucks. You know, how you try to discourage frivolous lawsuits, sometimes we do get zonings that are just, ain't that bit of an idea, but...
Yeah, I certainly think it's been that long since we reviewed, we certainly need to take a look at it, and the service delivery side. That's probably the immediate thing. So, I think it's knowing the other in the background, what we do need to go ahead and look at, let you explain these things to us, let us ask questions, and see where we go.
And you may wanna wait till January to revisit the question, because then you'll have a full board and idea, you know, and current philosophy of everybody sitting up here.
And this is just a suggestion, I mean, I'm sure we can go either way on this, some will do so, maybe not do so. I think it's something we need to, they do it every day, it's pretty complicated, it's pretty convoluted, and I think we need to understand that, and that's part of what Tony needs to do is help us understand the process and what's involved in it, so that then we can read it again, review it again, get some more information, ask questions. It's not something we have to do immediately, I think it's something we need to, we have to review it, but I don't think we have to rush to get it done.
I have one more question, Tracy. And as Harry says, we don't understand anything, but there is a building permit increased justification on here for a two thousand square foot house, thirty cents per square foot, which equals six hundred dollars. And then, the expenses are listed to process that, and it comes up to five hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. So...
You got a new figure that I may have put overhead in?
No, I don't have the new figure.
Yes, you do, but...
On this?
Oh, this one, come on.
Hand it down.
So, this one here, you put overhead in and it can that go higher?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like getting the information when I walk in the door.
Well...
And that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, some of it came in later, we did get some of our email. It's something we need to digest, and I think tonight, happy to listen to what they have to say, ask questions about that, it'll help us maybe study this even more.
And we are gonna need to come back to you too with recommendations on review of subdivisions by engineers, because we only got the one proposal, and it was super shocked big time, so we've gone out for additional proposals to see if we can find them. I've called several other counties, and they either, if you review them in-house, they either have an engineer in-house, or they actually do really staff unprof, I don't wanna say unprofessional, non-professional, non-degreed engineers, or even non-degreed individuals looking at them, as opposed to having them reviewed by an engineer. So, we still need to bring that before you.
All right, Sean Tracy, go ahead.
Okay, that was all that I, because I really presented the rezoning application and the Board of Zoning Adjustment application, so anything to do with building permits, you would need to discuss that with Brian and Mike. So...
If the application, building permits for new homes increased, we're running about ten behind at this point this year.
From last year?
From last year.
Yeah, last year was considerably ahead of the year before.
Right, we were ninety-two in 2012, last year we ended up at a hundred and forty-two, so we raised it up about fifty, right now we're currently running about ten behind this time last year.
That's very good, you just have to get them on the stick where you...
And part of that was due to a fantastic July and a really good October. We had twenty-two in July last year, we only had ten this year.
I think it was a good exercise, but something else, just instead of basing it for having the department go back and look at what their costs really got, I think that was beneficial if nothing else had changed.
Tracy, do you feel that a quarter square foot is better than a valuation?
Okay, most of the...
That's us. That's us. Basically, Tracy was just doing, like she said, the rezoning, the special use permit and the variance. Any other questions probably come on the way, so, and you've got support, you've got questions. And there again, all this is, is proposal. We're not out to say this is what we gotta have, this is what we think we should have because we want new booths and new trucks, that's not what we're at. But right now, we're losing money, about a hundred and fifty dollars. Per permit.
Per permit.
And again, Mitch Lyles' point is, I think more so from a house being built than necessarily rezoning, we are gonna get that one.
That's true.
This is a work session, and I could ask a month or so ago if we could have the stakeholders participate in the work session with us, and if no one has any objections, I'd like to ask if there are any home builders that would be affected by this, if you have any comments.
And can we get comments too, as far as better ways, is it okay to ask as far as ways we can improve service?
I think so. If nobody else is generous, I don't want...
No, I think that's a good idea.
Same to be pushing my ideas on the back, but I just think that we need some participation from those who'll be affected.
I think you raised hand first, you go first.
Oh, yeah. My name's Dewey Baxter, we've been building about three homes a year.
Exactly, good luck.
Yeah. Yes, my name's Dewey Baxter, I've been building about eighteen years now, mainly in Harris County, and an increase in the rate of permits, it seems senseless at this point. The economy isn't back where it needs to be, and it's high enough that if the inspector's office has a problem, they need to fire somebody. And I have somebody in mind for that, but we won't go into that today. But that's my thought on it, it's high enough where it is, and for the surrounding counties also, if they get more than what we get, good for them, they must be doing a bit better than we are. But if we ain't in a position to pay that much more, which after we finish the homes, the taxes, it's gonna be overwhelming, and the whole county is gonna get what they didn't get anyway. That's my thought on that. So, pardon me for being a little red. Oh, we don't wanna hear you be red. You build single family, yes, or exclusive? Yes. And now in Harris County, we live here, work at church here, my daughter goes to school here, and we do a lot of shopping, a dollar dinner here, so everything's... Excellent. We keep my money in Harris County, and I don't feel like there's any increasing in your rates at this time, my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Dexter.
My name is Dave Erickson, I'm the president of Greyhawk Homes, and I'm also here as the immediate past president for the Greater Columbus Home Builders Association, which includes the Harris County region as well. Thank you for the compliment about full and much permits last year. I, we did have a good year last year because we acquired a particular location that was favorably priced. Just as one builder's opinion, there's not an abundance of properly priced lots in Harris County for the future. I would predict with some caution, that I don't think you're gonna see a robust amount of growth in terms of more permits than you've seen in the past. Stable and probably holding its own, but I don't think you're gonna see it expand noticeably. Not for discussion at this session, but the commissioners as a whole probably need to step back and think about the direction that they believe that they want the county to go, going back twelve, fifteen years, I don't know when the two acre rule came in, that probably is more like six or eight years. There was a general sentiment in Harris County about limiting the pace of growth, making bigger lots, and, you know, for various reasons, I won't get into those right now. But that definitely had an impact on the direction that Harris County has gone in terms of the type of houses, the location of those houses and the cost of those houses. As the cost goes up, permits have gone down consequently. It's not an immediate effect, takes several years for the cause and effect to take place, but it has fully taken place now. That's going to impact the number of permits that go through the office, and thus the efficiency of the cost per unit that the staff of the county has to pay for. So, when you get to that discussion, which probably needs to be a work session offsite, you know, a real long, broad picture discussion, that needs to be something to consider along the way. As a developer, and I am a developer, adjusting the permit fee up to a fee, if I've heard of two hundred and fifty dollars, that ain't gonna kill anybody, and I wouldn't fight you real hard on that. Just ask you to be cautious, you know, don't let things get out of hand, just wanna pin. I would offer one item of caution, particularly since we have a number of commissioners here who are newer. It was about twelve years ago that the Home Builders Association and the county leadership were in a serious wrestling match over the cost of building fees and its impact on the county budget as opposed to the cost of actually running that department. It was our opinion, based upon the information we knew, that the building department at that time, this is old history, at that time was bringing in dramatically more income than the expenses justified. State law emphatically says that those fees are supposed to be in proportion to the legitimate cost, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, there's gonna be some up and down from year to year. But if you're distinctly out of touch with the cost of the department, and it's a net revenue to the county, that's a violation of state law. In the end, we called it a draw, we decided not to sue the county over it, but it's something I just wanted to remind you about, be certain about keeping those in balance, and be cautious about letting it become a net revenue source for the county, that's an easy place to touch for money. Self-sufficiency is necessary, proper education, proper staffing, proper mobility and all that stuff, you gotta run your department, you gotta pay for the fees of the county and justify it. As Harry and Becky, you both brought up, there's different perspectives. The citizens of Harris County, and I am one of those citizens, need to pay for the services that are appropriate. If there's extraordinary expenses to a particular niche, you can argue that too. So, it's an economic development expense, it's a broad issue as opposed to a specific use expense, that's a, you know, six, one way, half, the other, you win both arguments depending how you wanna play it. And so, those are my broad comments. I'm fairly knowledgeable about the building industry, if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to offer you one perspective about it, and let others speak as well if you wish.
You didn't give any input on some things we can do to improve services. Is it worth that three percent fee to be able to use a credit card so you don't have to come up here and pay a reinspection fee, not that you ever failed an inspection, but if it doesn't, but, you know, some things that we can, you know, do to make your life better, three percent's way less than it's gonna, you know, cost you for gas and time, so are those things that you, you know, or maybe you just wanna get, with the Home Builders Association, make some suggestions. We wanna provide the best service we can with what we have, and I think that would probably also help some staff time as far as, you know, not having to be able to deal with somebody coming in and doing that, if we can do something online. Your thoughts?
I run a fairly large staff, and so I am not directly in the field on a regular basis. The feedback I hear is that generally speaking, the building department does a pretty good job, they're fairly consistent from day to day, that's the biggest problem, is when you get a ruling on do a house this way in August and then October, it's a different way of doing it, causes a lot of difficulties. But generally speaking, they're fairly consistent, and that's important. Any builder who's never had a reinspection fee isn't doing the job, because, you know, there's gonna be different interpretations along the way, and there's lots of ways to build a house. And the inspectors may say do it this way, and you say, well, this way is approved too, and sometimes they just disagree, and there's some gray areas in the code as well. With regard to the fee, it is a huge, huge inconvenience to come pay for a reinspection fee. My one request would be that if a builder is willing to put some funds on account, you know, for instance, we, when we were doing a lot of permits in Harris County, for us to have to go get a twenty-five or fifty dollar check to get it up here, I mean, it costs us a hundred dollars or so just of manpower and move it all around to pay for that fee, I would much rather put a hundred dollars on deposit, you just hold it there, I'll be way ahead along. If you have that capability, I don't know if you do, I would encourage you to consider something like that, because it would be a great convenience. Or for, I'm not sure how you do that, that's broadly stating, making it more convenient to pay that fee before the CO is probably the certificate of occupancy, that's a trade term for the finish up. Paying for the CO is before then, maybe you don't have to have it now for the inspection fee, but before the next week or two, you need to get that check up. So, in the course of normal cycling of business, we can drop off and pay for a reinspection fee, that'd be another way to approach it. Because the CO is the gatekeeper keeper that says you've finished the house, and if you get a reinspection at framing, it's gonna be weeks before you get to the finish line. If we have the time to come pay for that before we get the certificate of occupancy, that would be a huge, huge convenience as well, if the first option I mentioned isn't like, isn't possible. So, those are a couple ideas that might be helpful to you.
How do they, I, and I looked up the fees in other surrounding counties except for the Skokie, how do they, how do our fees, the proposed fees compare to the Skokie's?
I did not look at the proposed fees in particular, and in truth, I wouldn't know if I could compare them off the top of my head accurately. I'd be glad to work up a check with you if it makes a difference, and you're welcome to inquire to the Home Builders Association, we'll pull together numbers from the various counties that we deal with, might be helpful.
I have extra problems with the proposed fees, if you want them.
I think my answer's gonna be more generic than that, Nancy, thank you. However, every municipality does it different, and thus the numbers run all over the place. And so, what's called a fee in one location is considered a service in another, and so how you classify it makes the biggest difference as what the number is. So, I'm not sure I can give you the proper answer, Mr. Wilson. So I'm not sure I can give you the proper answer, Mr. Wilson. I have the coins to draw here. For instance, we've got some places they call water service part of the fee in different jurisdictions and I think I'm referring to Auburn when I refer to this. You know, they move the numbers around a lot and just you've got to really work hard to tease them into proper categories in order to get true comparisons.
I spent several hours this morning with.
And, but the answer is going to come down to a simple, if you were only doing ten permits a year, for the department to be stable is going to come down to deciding which way we're going to argue it, whether it's a county broadly based expense and a subsidized amount or whether it's a specific user expense and that's, you guys need to settle that discussion first. But if, to be dramatic, let's say you made every county, every lot in the county had to be 10 acres, I guarantee you two years from now, you're not going to have a lot of permits, okay? And as a result, you're going to be processing very few permits with the same staff, your costs per unit are going to go up dramatically in process. So it's not a perfect answer, you know, given the permits you have now and where you think they're going, you need to set your fees, you've got to be stable financially depending upon which philosophy is being discussed. So I, that's, I didn't answer your question, but I hopefully offered some perspective on where it comes around. In the end, you make, you make the best judgment of what you think is right for the county. I'm not going to be one in here to argue dramatically one way or the other as long as you keep it under control and it's in general balance with the true cost of running the department. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Megan. I'm Edgar Houston and I live in the county and I work here and, but I've built in a lot of other counties in Georgia. And I have to say, Harris County is not the cheapest, but it's not the most expensive. And for the service we get, I think they do a great job and I think maybe if we expanded the department or increased the surface, you know, the increase in fee would be justified. I mean, even in planning, I mean, we rezoned stuff, you know, several other places, cities, counties, and it's a lot more expensive than here. But I think, like Dave said, I think if we want the county to grow, we really need to relook at the one acre lot. And I think that even if we do a, some call it some kind of, you know, change way to do so much green space, but you can still have one acre lots, I think that would help the county and the building department grow a lot. And I think it'd be good for the county. It'd get some more affordable housing in the county and help on the taxes. The, I don't, I think they're probably running as lean as they can go right now and if we get any kind of pickup, the building inspection department's going to need help, I mean, they had a man, two men if it ever, if it ever come, you know, picks back up. So you're looking at, you're going to be looking down the road at increased expenses, you know, and I, I don't know how y'all say you lose money, you know, on a fee, but I surely wouldn't be losing any money, you know, if I could help it. So I mean, you know, it's kind of like you go back to you pay, you pay what you get, you know, so if you get good service, you pay a little more. But I, you know, I think I was astonished, we didn't get to see the fee increase before we came in, but I'm amazed that Harris County hadn't gone up since the time y'all said it. I mean, that's just amazing. I mean, I'm glad we've been able to keep it down that low, that long, that low, you know. But I think if, to really go back to getting the county growing, getting subdivisions built, you've got to relook at the one acre lots, more green space, kind of a swap off type thing.
How would you envision the use of that green space within a subdivision? Would it be something that the developer, builder might be willing to put in a, you know, green area for, so that the community can have ball, you know, ballgames or whatever out there or would it be just leave it natural area?
Usually, usually in a county like this, more people want more natural areas, just left undisturbed. And what I see is like, and it'd be, you know, you'd probably turn it over to the homeowner's association, that's what we normally do, is turn over a green space to the homeowner's association. And then they, they, you know, if they want to do something with it, they can, but it's more like, you know, a couple of acres set aside down there and it might have the creek in it, you know, and it might be a wet area, but it'd be natural, it wouldn't ever be, you know, usually wouldn't be disturbed unless the homeowner said, we're going to make a park or we're going to make a ball field or something like that.
Certainly the developer wouldn't want to go to a huge expense, something that they aren't going to be able to sell and make any money on.
Unless you put, yeah, so, but a lot of, a lot of places I've seen, you know, I mean, gives the children a place to go, you know, like lots of times you'll find them in there in, kind of like at the creek, I've seen them, you know, in a green space that had a creek going through, you know, like the old days.
Find the tadpoles, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, it was just, and it was a natural green space, I mean, that's what it, that's a, instead of one of these big playgrounds, you know, that people got to keep up, like a lot of subdivisions out in the counties, in these other counties, have the one acre lots and then they'll make, put in so much green space.
And there is, there are other ways to take care of that, to maintain that and, and what was that seminar I had me that I went to?
Conservation easement.
That's right. And that was the seminar that Tracy was kind enough to get the information to me about and I went down and sat in on that meeting, conservation easements are certain ones and they, what's, helped me with the name of the?
The Chautauqua Valley Land Trust.
Right, Chautauqua Valley Land Trust is a, there are several and the planning commission has been discussing this for some months now, is the ways that you could do that and have the green space, but there are still a lot of questions to be answered as to, number one, how do you maintain it, who maintains it? But they have been discussing it for several months.
And I think that part of that is having some standards up front, for example, there's the green space in our neighborhood that, I'm waiting for winter so I get in there and figure out why it's cold mosquitoes, but this is an opportunity for an ad for the SWAT analysis coming up in October, don't you think? Because those are some of the topics you might want to discuss as far as economic strategy.
Yeah, yeah, it could be. We're in the early stages of doing a, and there've been several SWAT ones done, but I'm doing a SWAT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats for Harris County, looking at Harris County as a place to build, to do business. We will be certainly taking the information we've gotten from past seminar or meetings that bring some of this forward, but also then having another one to add to that and grow on it and again, to actually begin working with some of the issues that we need to address and to think of new cooperation between the Chamber of Commerce, Board of Commissioners, the county. I think it really bodes well for Harris County and will help us set some directions and really get the community input in that and begin making some concrete plans to move that way. So when that comes available, certainly we have to express invitations to people representing certain areas within the county and I know in geographic areas, I mean, professional areas, businesses or schools, whatever, doing that kind of thing. But also we can hear some from some of the other citizens of the community that maybe are not yet, it won't be that we get way down in weeds because that's, that can really make that kind of thing, really kind of come up with a framework that we can put the muscles on.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that was asked at the meeting today was to get an invitation list to the chamber, so I would definitely make sure that we put the Home Builders Association on that list and then they can notify their members if appropriate.
The developers, the home builders.
Yeah.
Just a comment before you leave, the idea of green space, I think is a good one, certainly something I'm interested in. I would certainly be willing to look at that as opposed to the two acre lot size, if you offset that with sufficient green space, I think there may be a balance, that's what I'd be willing to look at. And the idea of green space, I think is a great idea in theory. You mentioned homeowners associations, our experience up here with homeowners associations has not been very good. A lot of times a homeowners association is established at the time of the development, but then it basically is defunct after a while and homeowners don't maintain. And so if they don't maintain the charter for the homeowners association, then usually they will wait until they have property. So although it sounds good, I would, I would say I would actually make that work from maintenance. And if it's just totally natural, maybe there's not maintenance required, so I think it's certainly something.
Well, under the conservation easement, there are a lot of options, just in planning commissions, I say, they've had a great many discussions on how we can do that, but there are just some things that need to be ironed out as to, and the seminar that I went to the conference and I went to have a great many options that I had no idea under conservation easements. And even they would take, take that and they would go out each year and inspect that to make sure it's up to standard, but there are a lot of other moving parts to that, but we need to get to that part, but that might be.
But who would be responsible for that?
Well, see, that's the thing, that's the other, one of the other moving parts.
It's important.
But it might be a good idea to have them come and kind of give us a quick rundown exactly what they did, which was, it was very, it was very interesting to me and there were a lot of, a lot of other ideas that I circumcised them with. So it might be a good idea just to have them come and give us maybe a 10 or 15 minute brief on what they actually can do.
All right.
Good, thanks, I appreciate it. Any other builders, developers who wish to weigh in on any of that? Okay, then Ron, if you would, if you want to touch base on a little bit on some of the discussion.
On some of the discussion, I mean, thank the builders for being here and expressing some of the things that you had, really made effort with some of those. And there again, this is a proposal, this is not anything we're after, like I said before, we're not after wanting to get new things for us or anything like that. If you look at the one sheet that says building permit increases justification, which is based on a 2,000 square foot house, the current rate of 30 cents a square foot is 2,000, or at 2,000 square feet is $600. If you break down everything that we do, from taking in the application to the plan review, issuing for the permit, all the inspections that we do, demolition incurred, the processing of the building inspections, these states that come in, answering questions from contractors as they call us to find out what they, what they need to do or what alternate method may need to be done to the process of closing the permit, and then only adding four dollars for paper and printing costs, that's not much. That totals out to $738. So right off the bat, we're $138 in the hole. As these houses increase, which most of the houses in Harris County that we have been doing, in size, are much larger than 2,000 square feet. And so with that, each one of these inspections usually increases in time. A rough on an inspection will take much longer. And when we go and do a rough inspection, we're doing four services at one time, which is structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. In Columbus, you have to call a different inspection in on it and sometimes you can get them all lined up in the same day if you're lucky, but a different inspector comes to do each one of those four. So that's what we do and the same thing with the final, we're doing four inspections at that time as well.
What was that, soil?
Yeah, five, soil erosion as well. Our, my proposal, or our proposal, from 30 cents was just to go up two cents, which equates to only $40 on a 2,000 square foot home, it's nothing. Some of the other things that you see on this page, on the schedule of permit fees, which talks about the building permit fees, this one, a lot of what we're dealing with here, the only other one that was really, some of it was verbiage, one of the things that's the, we always had listed outbuildings, we would like to see that to match our ordinance, accessory buildings and that the permit be, if the, there's no permit if equal to or less than 500 square feet instead of 800 square feet. Now that's an accessory building. And the reason we're proposing that is because 800 square feet, we've got people living in without our knowledge. 500 square feet, it gets a little bit more tight.
That's why I'm going to space for one car.
Exactly, exactly. The, and also on that, if it does go more than 500 square feet, it's only 10, it's still, it's, matches what we do with barns and other livestock or agricultural, which is 10 cents a square foot instead of just having, I think at one time we had a $50 flat fee. No, we did not, excuse me. So basically the big one there is to train, to change that square footage from 800 to The, one of the ones on the commercial and industrial, for years, the tax assessors have evaluated our plans when we took them over. What I have found in just the two years that I've been here is they are greatly underestimated. That's the reason we're proposing a valuation estimated at $85 per square foot and this is only a commercial job, unless the value is provided by the builder. And basically, you know, Jim, I know you've asked earlier about what about a valuation fee base versus a first cent per square foot, amount of money per square foot. A lot of counties, and you'll notice at the top of mine, based on valuation, a lot of the surrounding counties that I looked at, or excuse me, the counties that I looked at were, they do that based on valuation. And the counties that, on that one, the comparison table, the counties that I chose there, Lee County, Madison, Oconee Pike, Neupson, and West Point, West Point being in the county, I thought that made sense. But I remember, I believe it was Commissioner Lautermaug actually said that he wanted counties that are relative in size and relative in economic, that kind of thing. So that's the reason I went with this. I can easily get, I actually have Columbuses right here, I have Phoenix Cities and I, I still, unlike Trace, I couldn't get anything to truth, but we can work on.
On their website.
Sir?
On their website.
But there, there's some things there that, and... Um, but there, there's some things there, and some of it was there, yes, it was. But I felt like that y'all wanted something, they're actually margining us. So, I didn't think y'all remembered that.
Well, actually, in my case, I have my brother in truth, Meriwether and Skogia. That's what everybody I know compares you to, they don't compare you to Arconee. Even though Arconee's probably much closer, uh, you know, as comparison otherwise.
And we, and that's fine, we can do that, and, and I'm, I'm not asking for anything to be voted on by them.
No, I mean, we won't. I think Jim's comments were correct, and I'm glad we've got what you've done. Cause I could does look at some that are out of this area, but similar in size, but I do think we need to look at the ones from, or surround to, to guess. That's where Erickson and.
What about true?
Used and they're doing.
What about true? You want true, looked at as, I mean, not true, uh, solid.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I looked at LaGrange too.
And I have LaGrange, I actually have LaGranges, uh, on here, but their stuff, being it just a city, it, it was not comparable to anything we've. Theirs was so different than the way we do it, it was hard to compare it to what we do. And the two times I printed, the first two times I printed that, it came out black. They got that, something about when you print certain documents, they just come out black. I don't know what's.
And if I could say one other thing, I'm not opposed to looking at increasing fees and all. But my take on all of this is, since two thousand and eight, it's been a nightmare as far as building goes. And I know that, and y'all know that. I would like to see us look at something maybe at raising fees incrementally, rather than, than we do this all at once and double fees. Uh, so if we could, you know, so, because the home builders, the builders, in fact, everybody that has a small business, is just now beginning to see a little bit of white. And what I don't wanna do is discourage any of our local builders from building in Harris County and maybe have the possibility of something happened that happened across the river down to Fort Mitchell.
Exactly.
I do not wanna see that happen in Harris County.
Um, one of the things that, that does, excuse me, that does need to be addressed is the reinspection fees. And you'll notice on here that we're giving them, the first one's built into the permit. The second one, because we actually have to go out and do the inspection, spend time, money, and gas to do, we're saying that on that second inspection, you're gonna get twenty-five dollars. Anything after that will get charged fifty dollars. Because the thing that we've been getting lately, we go out and do an inspection, and they're not, one, they're not even ready for the inspection, even though they've already called in, or two, um, they're, they want us to do their punch list. And that's, that's not what we're here for. We're here to go in and, and, and check and make sure they meet code. There, as a builder, they should be doing that before we go. Um, so that's, we wanna kinda deter some of that by doing these, uh, for years, the inspection fees has always been, third, third inspection.
Third, right.
Third inspection, so you got the first two free. And on, and after the third one, if you failed in, then you got a twenty dollar reinspection fee. And I do agree that we need to have, like Mr. Erickson said, we need to have some other way than these guys. It is tough, because this is what we ran into before. You get some builders, they go out of town, they find out their building has failed, and then they can't get anybody out there to pay the permit fee because they're out of town. That's happened before. So, if we could get something in, in place as far as what Mr. Erickson said, either by credit card or by putting money in the pot, I don't, I, I don't know, that's something we gotta look at.
That's, we'll have to look at that from the finance side as far as, you know, have to have, make sure we have absolute accountability on it.
Right.
Checks and balances.
Do not, do not want to go out to the site and take a check on that. I, I don't, I don't want that responsibility put on our guys, um, to receive a check on site. And typically, when we go out and do an inspection and you fail it, nobody's gonna anyway to give us some, uh, a, a check, so. Any questions you got on any of the other fees? Uh, if you flip over, and this was, um, on the second sheet. Or first sheet. Um.
Schedule fees.
And if you'll go down to land disturbance permit fee. Um, that's, the review fee is, and, and the fifteen hundred dollars disturb acre, all that's already there. We, we just needed to put it on this thing here. Um, the plan review for residential, you look at the lot size, the, the lot, the number of lots, initial fees, and subsequent reviews. That, the multifamily, the commercial office, industrial, and city PD, PUD resort. All of that stuff right there is this. That is when somebody brings us plans. This is not, it's not actually a plan review of the building, okay? It is a plan review of the site. This is all concerning site fees, which, because we don't have it each year, we gotta have something. Um, and, and the sticker shock that we did get from the other one, uh, really raised an eyebrow. So, all of those fees right there are, are probably gonna be, they might not even be close. I looked at several counties, um, and this is about as generic as I could make it without getting crazy with it. The only other one that, that if you look down under subdivisions, if it's a minor subdivision, which administratively I can do, we're changing that from ten dollars a lot to twenty dollars a lot. And then for subdivision, a major subdivision, which has to give to the planning commission, which again, that three hundred and fifty dollar fee incurred, we're changing it from ten dollars a lot to twenty dollars a lot, and then a final review fee of a hundred and fifty dollars flat fee instead of a hundred dollars.
You're proposing.
Proposing, yes. Sorry.
And we're about out of time, are you guys, can I just wrap up?
I'm good, I have just questions that y'all may have. And you're more than welcome to come by and we can talk about them. I'm open to that, so.
I, but I do, I wanna again thank you, uh, both of you, your, your staff, for the work that you have done pulling this together. Something that we should review, uh, and review in fairness to the county as well as to the builders and developers and the citizens. So, I do appreciate that. I think we do need to look at those others a little closer hand also, and, and have some other discussions. Appreciate the comments from all you builders and developers that are here tonight.
Let me add one that came up before concerning if Mike was out and we needed somebody to review the plans. I can review the plans at point for, for that final signature, it has to be a licensed person, a certified plan reviewer. Mike and I sat down with a list of about eleven names that we found that were in this area that were certified plan reviewers. And the ones that I talked to said that they would not take on that liability.
Okay.
So, we've never had a problem with him being out. Uh, he was out eight weeks when I first started, after two weeks, he went into heart surgery mode. During that eight weeks, we never had a problem, not one hiccup. So, we brought him to him.
Okay, good. Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. All right, now it's time to regular session of order.